May I guess that you were thinking about doing fishing today?
Today.
Yeah?
Today.
You must have drank that.
Let's see, small, you stab 'em, we'll slab 'em.
I would stab 'em.
All right, I think we're ready.
There we go.
We stand quite clearly.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Greenwicher.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Couch.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Hook.
Yes, I'm here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
And Alderman Ruzika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
No approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Martin, I think we're through you.
All right.
I saw a person here. Okay, there's been a lot in the news lately about the new administration's attitude towards the National Park Service, most of which kind of makes me nervous around the National Park Designation for St. Genevieve. So I reached out to Tom Schulte. Tom was on once staff, who's now retired, but not disconnected. And I asked him if he would inquire on our behalf as to what we need to do, if anything, in order to keep the ball rolling and keep that on track. And he said that he would, and in a couple of days, he'll probably get back to me in the next day or so. Might need to organize some telephone letter-writing efforts in order to make sure it keeps going in the direction that we would like. Did you all know we hired Gary Roth as the Public Works Department? We're gonna... I'm not sure how that job evolved. Technically, it's the Director of Public Works in Streets. Somehow it morphed into Field Operations Superintendent. I'm not sure what that was all about. He's the Director of Public Works in Street Department. He's already having an impact on the organization. He got in, he's getting things organized, inventorying things, and has found a lot of savings that he can realize by using resources that we really didn't even know we had. The... Working on the random drug testing process has been an education. Alderman Donovan raised the issue of whether we should extend it citywide. It turns out, you can do that in the private sector, but you can't in the public sector. And that came from consulting with the insurance agency, as Alderman Couch had suggested. So, for reasons that nobody really understands, the courts have ruled that if you're gonna do random drug testing in the public sector with public sector employees, you have to have some kind of reason behind it. And the most common reason is safety and security. So you identify safety-sensitive positions, which are generally defined as those who operate city vehicles or equipment, which is kind of what we had in mind in the first place. And then you can adopt a policy for them. He sent some sample policies to me, MML sent some sample policies to me. Our policy really is pretty good, relative to what I have learned about the prevailing law on this. I still want to tweak it with kind of identifying who is the safety-sensitive employee, rather than just leaving it open to being safety-sensitive. But we're not gonna have to do a whole lot of changes to implement this, so I should have that ready for your next agenda. You should look forward to hearing from some landlords, who are raising, again, the issue of delinquent water bills. You know, they have tenants, tenants don't pay their water bill, we don't... A month goes by, for us, before we know they're delinquent and they've used that much water in the interim, we have a deposit that we apply to any water bill. Their ordinance makes the property owner and the tenant jointly responsible for the delinquent water bill. That has been addressed before this board twice in the last six years. I've explained that to the people who were complaining, and said, "But, you know, it can always be reconsidered." So I think at least one group plans to show up in the next week or two, or the next couple of meetings, to address that issue. Matt's here. We did receive a bid on the rotor and its installation of $94,880. It's kind of a proprietary product, I think we talked about that. The rotor itself, you know, only one company makes it, so... But the installation is something that could have been bid competitively. But as it turns out, nobody wants to bid against the dealer who handles the equipment, so it kind of is what it is. Finally, Pam brought up today, it's not on your sheet, that the Show Me Green Sales Tax Holiday is coming up again in April. In order to implement that, it requires a board decision. It's not on the agenda. She didn't want to put it on the agenda unless she had a sense this is something you want to do, so she asked that we just discuss it and give her directions as to whether to prepare the ordinance for it, because we'll have to do it in our next meeting. Any comments?
What was already done, or my recollection?
It's on the energy.
Energy.
Yes.
Okay, it'll be on the next agenda. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay. Call, who?
Hello? How's it going? Good. So my staff report's pretty short and sweet. The main thing I added, you know, beyond the staff report, was the invitation of public notice and the agenda for the upcoming meeting on March 8th. And I just wanted to make sure that you all knew about that. FEMA has sent out preliminary revised flood maps, and they're going to have a public meeting here on March 8th from 1:30 to 4:00. And they'll be explaining the changes and opening it up for any questions, comments that anyone might have.
And we, at several meetings, we've been along the way during this process, so the changes aren't gonna be as applied to us unless we've done something different.
Right.
It's an opportunity for the public to deal with this.
Right.
We had a meeting with the affected property owners, where three or four then showed up. So it's been a participatory process.
Right.
And Matt talked a little bit today, and you have a map of that now?
We do.
And you indicated to me that some of these people who were not in the floodplain before are going to be in the exact...
Well, that's gonna be basically the area that's over at the Third Street Levy.
Those are the people we invited to the meeting?
That's what I thought.
Yeah, because they're not considering that a certified levy.
No.
So... A lot of the others, though, with the technology that they're using, that they used for this last set of maps, allowed them to be much more detailed on it, and it actually brought a lot of people out of the floodplain that were in it.
Large areas north, north, north of North Carolina.
Right.
Floodwater line, how's that? That vicinity?
It did some in that area, but that levy that's right there also played a role in some of that decision as well.
But we were also told that that levy didn't need to have anything done to it.
Originally.
Right. The courses, the courses.
Right, the courses, FEMA doesn't.
I know, standards.
Yes, they have different standards on that.
We'll leave it at that.
And that's all that I have.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So a couple of people around the table actually have color on the back of theirs, and then I realized how much ink that was taken, the rest of you have black and white on the back of yours, so if you want a color picture, you'll have to share. So the... To start maybe from the bottom up, the pictures on the back of your report, these are some of the costumed greeters that help us out on Saturdays during the summer, starting in May and going through September. I do a program called Saturdays in St. Jen, and we tried to have costumed greeters, we tried to have a demonstration of skills, like sometimes it's spinning, or weaving, or storytelling down in the historic district. And then we also try to have, when we can, live music, just like a soloist or a duo. Usually, it would be French Creole music. Sometimes, we're lucky enough to have the whole German band section of our St. Genevieve Municipal Band to play on a Saturday morning. They usually try to do that two or three times during the summer. But for anyone listening out there, I have a whole summer full of Saturdays to fill up, so if you're interested in walking around and greeting people, being ambassadors for St. Genevieve's Historic District, would love to have you do so, and we'll find a Saturday that it works out for you. And if you don't have French colonial costuming, and you'd like some, I even know people to put you in contact with to make that happen for you. And if you're musically talented, or if you can do a skill, let us know, because we're looking for all three for the whole summer. And that's why you have these pictures, because those are some of the people who participated in the past. So back to the report. In January, the Welcome Center had 416 visitors. We were closed for all our part of four days during that month, either for weather-related or funeral services. By contrast, February, of course, has already started to pick up. We don't normally see a day over 100 people until, like, at least April, not including our school group tours, because a lot of times we'll have a couple of hundred students through there on a weekday. But this past Sunday, with the beautiful weather, we had more than 100 people. That's just unheard of for February, so let's hope that we're off to a great start for 2017. You can read about a couple of events there and the turnout. We had a really great chocolate walk. The Welcome Center served as the check-in point for chocolate walkers, again. This event is sponsored by the St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal Project. We also hosted a speaker that was sponsored by the Foundation for Restoration of St. Genevieve. This was a speaker on the French origins of the Rozier family here in St. Genevieve. And right now, we still have the traveling exhibit on loan from the Missouri State History Archives. It's called Past Preserve. That will only be here for another week or so. So if you haven't seen it and you'd like to, please do stop in. There's the plea for volunteers. We're seeking volunteers for the Saturdays in St. Jen program. Last week, we did an outreach program in St. Charles that was sponsored by KEZK radio station out of St. Louis. It's called a Wine and Chocolate Event. It was tough duty. And this weekend, I'll be at the hospital's Women's Health Program, so representing St. Genevieve. At the very bottom there, I'm gonna start doing these eclipse updates on a regular basis, but the mayor and I have had a couple of meetings, and I have been attending meetings for the Eclipse Task Force. I think at a previous meeting, I reported that our eclipse glasses for the... I viewed the eclipse in St. Genevieve, the official eclipse glasses had been ordered, and those are supposed to come in in the next week or so. I've also met with both of the local schools and our emergency services and downtown renewal, and also the community center. So the general plan for the eclipse, it's not until August, but August 21st is the Day of the Eclipse, that's a Monday. So we decided to extend the economic benefit of the eclipse in our community by having a music festival on Sunday afternoon over here in the area of the courthouse in the Valley Desert. So next week, we're gonna be getting a group together to bring in, like, the heads of all the departments to get together and kind of talk about that. So the city, the county, the chamber, emergency management, the Sheriff's Department, we have a whole list of people that will be getting together. And if anyone was here at the time that we had the Tour of Missouri Bicycle Race that came through St. Genevieve, we're modeling this planning process pretty closely on that. There are different committees. We will be reaching out into the community and asking for people to volunteer in those committees, everything from housing coordination to parking cars, so all skill levels required and admired. So also, we met with the Jirdefet Planning Committee and asked their permission to... The eclipse is the week right after the Jirdefet Weekend, so we asked their permission to use some of the assets that would be deployed for Jirdefet for the following weekend. They agreed to do that, and they agreed to allow RV camping down at the Moses Austin site, so we'll be coming up with a way to manage those sites jointly with them and refer people there. We'll probably be looking for other sites as well. So there'll be a lot of discussion of that in the months to come. So I just thought it would be good to just kind of begin to put that on there as like a... Just a footnote, there'll be lots of planning going on. If anyone wants to get directly involved with one of those committees, just let me know. Also, for those of you, and I know there are several people around the table who are involved with local civic organizations, for food vendors and food trucks and that sort of thing, we're going to give first option to all of our civic organizations. So like the Knights of Columbus, the Scooter Barkers, the Pork Burgers, the Shish Kebabs, all of those, we'll have first option to participate in Sunday and Monday, Sunday or Monday or both days. So we'll need lots of food, lots of drinks, so...
So do you envision having a group of volunteers who are workers that works, that's gonna work on this, and you have meetings with those people?
Yes, yes. So there'll be sort of like heads of committees, and there's about 10 or 12 different committees. And then there'll be lots of volunteers needed on each one of those committees. We're also talking about, you know, during Jirdefet, they do off-site parking, and then there are parking shuttles that run people from their car downtown. We're gonna use that same model for the viewing event on Sunday. So I've started to reach out to, like, the big parking lots along M Road, Eric Scott and National Vinyl, Valley Football Field, and others, so that we can secure parking there. And for those who are wondering, St. Jen is having school, and they have ordered all of their eclipse glasses through us, too. And Valley is not having school, but they might be doing an event on the desert on Monday. We've asked them to reserve the desert for parking for us for Sunday for the music festival.
Sandra, and please don't take this the wrong way, okay? It just doesn't seem like we put much consideration in what we're doing right here. We've had other towns around here for months planning this, and all, once we get something, we've got volunteers coming in, we've got park cards, and it doesn't seem like we're doing a whole lot.
Well, so we've been, actually, in the Tourism Advisory Committee meetings, we've been talking about it for some time, and reaching out through the various organizations for some time now. But the actual getting the volunteers together and putting them onto these committees and staffing up the committees, that's what we're starting, that process, right now, so...
It's still seven months out.
Yeah, six months as of right now.
Six months out.
Yeah.
At the risk of saying something wrong, so if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, I'll do it anyway. In my conversations with Perryville, which appears to be doing a lot, at least on social media, a group came together, the local group, with the support of City Hall, but it isn't a function of City Hall, to put that together. We haven't had that group spontaneously form in St. Genevieve, so the mayor and Sandra are taking the lead now to generate activity that didn't happen organically.
Yeah. Dick, do you want to add anything to that, as far as the cooperation by entities?
Certainly, we have had conversations with it. The chamber obviously is involved in this, and we'll be counting on their support. There was really nobody, and we certainly tried over the last several months to spark that interest, to try to get someone to take this project on and to get some people to take this project on, and it just didn't seem to happen, so we know we've got to get... So we're gonna do it and get it done. Something's got to happen, so it's gonna happen. We'll get it done.
Where's this National Eclipse Task Force, where they base them?
So the meetings that I go to are the Regional Eclipse Task Forces, and they're based out of the St. Louis Science Center. So I started going to those over a year ago, and like, bringing information back to the mayor and Martin and to the Tourism Advisory Council, and, you know, reaching out through our peers. I mean, that's... I brought a speaker in in August of last year from the University of Missouri, and, you know, I know a lot of you came to that, and so... So, I mean, we've been working on this, it's just that the... Now we're into the actual, you know, where do we want to put the chairs, where do we want to put the stage, where do we want to put the porta-potties, all that kind of planning, so... But to your original question about where is the National Task Force? I'm not really sure, because we're the regional, and so it could be based out of DC, like, at the National Science Foundation and that kind of thing. I do know that NASA has chosen Carbondale, Illinois, as their location for their, sort of their broadcast of the eclipse events, all the way from the West Coast to the East Coast. So, yeah, so they'll be in Carbondale. And they'll be covering it live as it's happening across the country. So it's on a Monday. It's gonna hit here a little after 1:00 in the afternoon, but it starts out on the West Coast about mid-morning.
I have a recall from the presentation, that's not the only place where they will be. They'll have observation stations all along the path.
Bringing the data, bringing the stream, the video stream into their... So I would say probably NASA must be the one that is overseeing the National Task Force, if I had to guess that. It seems like that's probably the case.
Lex, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Thanks, thank you. Public comments? Anything from the board? Minutes of February the 9th. Want you to approve?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Treasuries Report, the January. No approval. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolution 2017-03, resolution of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, stating intent for the St. Genevieve Welcome Center to apply for a grant with the St. Genevieve Municipal Band Grant Program.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And old business, Bill Number 41-41, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a contract for street lighting and electric service with Citizens Electric Corporation.
Motion to approve. Second. And then a roll call.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number 41-41 now becomes ordinance 4079.
Thank you. Bill Number 41-42, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2017 relating to the sewer fund number 031.
Motion to approve. Second. Roll call.
Alderman Ruzika.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number 41-42 now becomes ordinance 4080.
Thank you. Bill Number 41-43, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2017 Budget relating to the Water Fund Number 030.
Please. Second. Roll call.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number 41-43 now becomes ordinance 4081.
Thank you. Bill Number 41-44, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2017 Budget relating to the Debt Service Fund Number 050.
Reapproved. Second. Roll call.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number 41-44 now becomes ordinance 4082.
Okay, thank you. New business, Bill Number 41-46, first reading.
An ordinance approving a proposal from Vanda Venter Engineering for the purchase, installation, and startup of one Magna Rota rotor aerator for the sewer plant in an amount not to exceed $97,880.
Reapproved. Second. Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We need to get started on this.
Yeah, we'd like a second reading.
Go ahead. Move down to second reading. Sorry.
Gary, second. All in favor, second reading of 41-46.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Bill Number 41-46, second reading.
An ordinance approving a proposal from Vanda Venter Engineering for the purchase, installation, and startup of one Magna rotor aerator for the sewer plant in an amount not to exceed $97,880.
Motion to approve. Second. Joe. Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number 41-46 now becomes ordinance 4083.
Thank you. Bill Number 41-47, first reading.
An ordinance approving a proposal from Vanda Venter Engineering for the purchase and installation of a new light pump for the lift station located at Robinwood Drive in an amount not to exceed $10,855.
Motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And they would like to...
You need to move on?
Yeah.
Only got one pump running now. Make a motion, have a second reading?
Second. All in favor, second reading of Bill Number 41-47?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, second reading, Bill Number 41-47.
An ordinance approving a proposal from Vanda Venter Engineering for the purchase and installation of a new light pump for the lift station located at Robinwood Drive in an amount not to exceed $10,855.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number 41-47 now becomes ordinance 4084.
Thank you. Bill Number 41-48, first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and St. Genevieve County to assist in the funding and cooperation of the St. Genevieve County Recycling Center.
Motion to approve. Okay, a couple seconds. Okay, we got a second. Okay, discussion, please.
What participation do we have other than helping fund the operation of the recycling center?
Contracted calls to the city to make repairs for the forklift.
Right.
That's it. And they just started the forklift.
And what is the, who are the people that, I mean, how do we understand the accountability if we're going to refund this, and I want to continue to fund it? But I just am curious about, the county just takes care of it and we just do what they say and go on.
The county has a contract with the, this is a shuttle workshop, this is their board, and they're managing the recycling center. We have, again, our only obligation is if the forklift breaks, we pay to have it fixed. And frankly, in the last six years, even the old one didn't break very often.
Yeah. Thank you.
So any, any, any other questions? Okay, motion and second, all in favor of 41-48.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. It's all the business under other business. We have an approval of a liquor license for the Friends Foundation of St. Genevieve County Memorial Hospital for an event to be held at St. Genevieve County Community Center on April the 8th, 2017, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM to raise money and awareness for the St. Jen County Memorial Hospital Wellness Department.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. And then we have an approval of a street closure request from the St. Genevieve County Community Center. We closed progress Parkway for our Night Flow 5K Run on Saturday, April 1st, between 8:00 PM and 9:15 PM.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Anything else to be brought before the board? Lots of, I want to make a motion. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you very much.
Will you sign some stuff?
Sure.